All the meeting to border on it, we have present five members and we'll start out by honoring our country with Budleben. Budleben is to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation under God and in this world, and every team, justice for all.
Starting out with our agenda, we have Sheriff Gatton up first.
Morning.
Morning.
Mark Gatton, Detective Sheriff, I sent some information, it's just an annual report that I'm required to do by statute, just came over to see if there was anything you want to talk about in the report. Some of the numbers this past year reflect differently, and I think mainly because of COVID, especially the daily population and some of the new arrests. So, any other questions? And I made an attachment that didn't go to state, but just deal stats that we have started now.
Mark, is there anything that may or may not be in the report that you're seeing as a concern concerning trend for crime or what's going on that your officers have to respond to?
Crime, no, it's kind of holding the same, as you can see the top
Right.
seven are the same as they have been for the last three years. Back to the biggest thing, we had an incident yesterday, and I'll email everybody about it, I'd rather not talk openly, meeting about it, but mental health, probably the biggest fight in there, and medical cells and disciplinary cells, but that's, that's issues in the jail that we know about. And I feel we're moving forward well with taking the next step or attempting to take it.
Thank you.
Off the top of your head, what's the percentage of meth-related charges and incarcerations?
Meth has been down a little bit over the last year, it's starting to peak back up again on traffic stops. Percentage-wise, I couldn't tell you meth individually because the drug-related offenses are not divided by what category, I mean, it does do the category, but doesn't define the exact drug, whether it's heroin, meth, cocaine, so I couldn't give you an honest answer, maybe how close that percentage would be.
Okay. Any other questions for Sheriff Gatton?
If you do in the future, you can email me or give me.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up on our agenda is Peabody Public Library appointment.
Hi, everyone.
Good morning.
Good morning.
You should be receiving your packet, a list of people that are interested in serving on the Peabody Public Library Board of Trustees. Dr. Michael May Porter is resigning as of May of this year, and so I've given you the name of candidates interested in serving. And I think I provided background information and maybe some things you should look at before you make your decision. And I came this morning in case you had any questions.
In my telephone conversation with Councilman Hodges on it, he is recommending, and I will put the name in for motion, Mark Parker. So moved. Second. Any discussion in reference to this? Those in favor signify by raising your right hand. Opposed, the same.
Thank you very much.
Next on the agenda is Amy.
Good morning, Councilmembers. Amy, thanks for the county emergency management basis I haven't met, so glad to meet you today, appreciate that. I come with Ward Council, I had submitted my request through the auditor's office, a request in the amount of $2,908.80 as an additional appropriations to my operational budget, line item 21,000. The nature of my request revolves around the Whitley County Council on Aging. Early on, they were closed down, we provided recommendations for their closures and how they could continue to operate their facility and provide services to our most elderly community. As they looked forward with the reopening and the vaccination process, they had looked to open on April 1st, and as Becky was working through all of the requirements that are necessary for cleaning and providing and bringing that higher-risk group in, she reached out to me for consultation on what type of products she should be utilizing that were safe for food sanitation in that environment. So I networked with some of the other resources that I had in our community, and we identified a product that she could use that would provide sanitation in that area. We worked on any possible funding sources that she had, and unfortunately, most communities had already expended a lot of their funding for that early on because Council on Aging was one of the last ones to kind of reopen. I mean, we've had essential services open for quite some time. So I told her that I would, at this point in time, take it into my budget, my current Whitley County EMA budget, and look for sources of funding for her. I come before you as a request for additional appropriation based upon the CARES Act money that was encumbered at the end of last year. If you recall, we received a substantial amount of money. I think at the end of year, we had about $8,955 and some change, and that was ultimately encumbered into county budget, county general. That was the intention of the CARES Act funds, was to do exactly what this entails, provide those services to organizations, especially those that are dealing with high-risk needs. So I come before you to ask for reappropriation of that initial CARES Act money back into my account, just to supplement the cost associated, $2,958.50 to get them back open. As an additional detail, what that provided is two fogging machines, the disinfectant, to be able to use that in their large space, as well as four hand-dispensing sanitation stations, as you see throughout other facilities now. So that was the cost associated. Open to any questions you might have?
Well, I have seen what you have given to the senior center, and it's really awesome. It will save them an astronomical amount of time for cleaning, to be able to go in there and utilize the products that you gave. I appreciate it, and I know that they appreciate it, they're very, very excited about it, and gave a sort of demonstration without using the product. So thank you, I appreciate it, and I know it will really be utilized.
And that money is still there in general fund?
We haven't, yep, we haven't used that. You guys wanted to leave it there, and then she would come back if she needed it to ask for additional.
So do I need to make a motion to, to move the money back to her account?
Yep, just to approve the additional appropriation request, yeah.
Make that motion.
My second to. Any further discussion? All those in favor, signify by raising your right hand.
Thank you very much, Council, I appreciate it. Always open, life-wise, to any questions you might have.
Next on our agenda is Paula Warden.
Why is everybody? I requested a grant amendment to transfer some funds out of contractual services for the pre-trial grant to assist with some of their employee benefits. So that's what you have in front of you today, is a grant, to see through the emails of court services to fund pre-trial services.
I make the motion that we approve this transfer within pre-trial services from contracted services to the four line items noted in resolution.
Second. We have a motion and second, do we have any further discussion? All those in favor, signify by raising your right hand.
Thank you. Just wanted to let you know, we begin the certification process at the end of May for our pre-trial services program, and that is something they are really encouraging if you want to be considered future body. I think we're in a really good position, our staff has been working really hard, all stakeholders, and I have no doubt that we'll be certified. Any questions about that process, let me know, but I will continue to send you emails on it as well.
So do you, you apply for grant, excuse me, all year long, whenever they come up, or is there certain times different, how are you, when spots come up?
There's different, yeah, different funding cycles. The federal has one, is a lot of times they're October through September, a lot of the state agencies are still operating July 1st to June 30th, and then our kidney corrections grant recently went to a calendar year, so their fund is now January through December, so all year. And when we met with Representative Judy a week and a half ago, he, he offered his legal assistant to help us find additional funding sources. So she just sent me a list yesterday that I'll follow up on, see if we would be eligible for any of those grants as well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Scott, you're next on the agenda.
Good morning.
Good morning.
So, the health department's received two different grants from the state, two different areas of the state, and we need to have those appropriated appropriately, so we can start spending money on them. One was based upon the work that we did in the Health Department in 2020 with all the COVID. We, with the help of our grant administrator, Lori Shipman, we put in to that grant of hours put in by EMA, and then the Health Department, the Health Department did over 1,200 hours of COVID work last year, and so put all our activities into a spreadsheet, Kami helped us with that, that was submitted, and we won that grant through the safety, it's called IFA, Indiana Finance Authority, safety award grants. We got that money from them. We also got a grant from the Indiana State Department of Health with regards to immunization, specifically with the immunization clinic. So both those grants we received, we could have them appropriated so that we can then start spending money, which we probably already have. We just downloaded, those grants can be used for pretty much anything, supplies, equipment, personnel, so there may be about a few things taken out of that here in the next year, for sure. Any questions?
We have council need to approve these, correct?
Yes, if you please approve them, that way then Jana can start paying them bills that we've already turned in for them, and then we can start spending money out of those things. And of course, then that won't affect our current budget as much, you know, we'll spend money on the grants, we'll use that grant first.
So is this two different grants, or?
Two different grants, one's from the Indiana Finance Authority, one's from the State Department of Health. The Indiana Finance Authority was based upon the work done in 2020. So it's kind of like, they got CARES Act money too, and then they offered it to the counties based upon the work that they did for COVID.
I make a motion, we approve the resolution for additional appropriation from the coronavirus relief fund.
Second. Go ahead and do the second one, or do the other two?
Sure. And then I would additionally move that we approve the appropriation resolution for the fund named immunizations and vaccines.
Second to that also. I have a motion and second on both resolutions on it, do we have any further discussion? All those in favor of both resolutions signify by raising your right hand. Opposed, the same.
In addition, you see on there that the Whitley Department, we're doing some remodeling in the Whitley Department. The reason why we're doing that, the commissioners approved it, is we're using their laboratory room in the back, part immunizations, we have that since January, and they're wanting to come back a couple days, a week in April, and then full-time in May, and so we would be still occupying that area. So we're taking one of the rooms that they don't use very often, adding that a laboratory room for them, we're putting in a sink, ready the plumbing, doing electrical work to their cabinets for them. That way they can use that room, which is closer to their office, which helps them too. So I think it's a good wise choice, we'll be using that immunization grant, vaccine grant, to pay for that upgrade. So it will be a good thing in the future to have that office there anyway, so. So that's good for that. An update, then?
Yes, please.
So, as of today, no masking here in Whitley County, other beyond what the governor says, so your schools will still have it, the vaccine clinic will still have them, we'll still have masks on in there as long as we're running the COVID clinics. We are doing between 320 and 330 people a day now that we're open, and so around 1,170, 150 people a week, which means we're really hopping, it's one, that's six people every 10 minutes. So we are starting to see a little bit of change in the demographics, obviously we're seeing people probably mostly in the 60s, who were in the 60s and 70s now coming in, had some, actually 1999, ended yesterday, so even as young as 20, 21 are coming in here shots. We have been seeing a lot of cancellations or no-shows with that younger group, so as it goes on, we'll probably have less and less people, and that's why, and we're going to continue this rate through April, but in May, we're going to slow down to two weeks, or two days a week, and then partly just going to do a Saturday clinic for Johnson Johnson home. So we're helping them figure that out right now, but they'll just do for the first four Saturdays in May, from 7:00 AM to 11:00 AM, Johnson shots. So we'll be slowing down in May, and then even farther slowing down hopefully in June with that, so there'll be less signage and stuff out there every day. And hopefully, by that time, I'm hoping by the end of May, we're at 40% or higher of people Whitley County being vaccinated. Right now, we're almost to a third.
So with the cancellations from the younger group, are you, have to throw away any doses yet, or?
No, it's getting harder, because now that it's open for everybody over the age of 18, for Moderna, our call list is very small. What we're trying to do is look maybe a day ahead, if we recognize anybody we know, call them to come in, but it is getting harder. And secondly, Moderna is going to a 15-dose vial instead of 10, so it's going to make it even harder for us not to throw anything away, but we are making every effort to call somebody, so.
I'm sure you are, you do a good job.
Scott, I really appreciated the explanation you gave to the commissioners yesterday about why we stay in yellow.
Yes.
I think that would be helpful for all of us to.
We're still in yellow, we are seeing a lot of still kids every week coming down with positives. So if you are in close contact at school and you get set home, a lot of times you'll go get tested, that's why we're seeing positives still. Most of our days, we're seeing anywhere from zero to eight people positive. Last week, we saw 15, because we had a school classroom go out. So I think that we will still stay yellow, not go down to blue until closer to the end of school, if not out of school. So that's probably what will still be in that color for a while. And you'll see other counties run this, go up and down, depending on their numbers. That's kind of what you see when you see a virus trend out of the society, it's not a straight down graph, it's kind of a bumpy graph all the way down as it goes. So we'll still see positives here and there, and we might be blue and have to go back to yellow, we don't know. But I don't see anything on the horizon that says big severe outbreaks or anything.
And did I understand correctly that based on our population, with one of the metrics, if we have five people test positive?
Five or more turn us to yellow. So, yeah, it's very sensitive, so. It will get less and less, when school's out and you don't have to go get tested to go back to school, then get tested. So, and many of the counties that you see blue now are blue because they don't have testing in their counties. They just don't tell you.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Just really appreciate everything the whole health department has done through this, and the extra workload, you've made a huge difference.
Kudos and compliments. Any other questions for Scott?
Thank you.
Next on our agenda is appropriation and reduction for Highway Department. Have anybody on the Highway Department?
No, I will, I'll talk.
Jana's going to do.
So, when Jen was going through the salary ordinance, she had found that we actually had a salary for the Highway Department on there incorrectly, he had too much, we didn't notice it, so she caught it, and this is the reduction, it was $795. It was just, I think, a typo in the Excel spreadsheet, so this is just to fix it, just the reduction.
That was a year, right? 795 for the year.
Yeah, for the year, yes.
Do we have to advertise the change in the salary ordinance?
Yep, and well, yeah, you have the, so it's the reduction and the salary ordinance amendment, I have both in your packet.
We'll entertain a motion for the request amendment for the salary. Second. The motion and second, any additional discussion? All those in favor signify by your right hand. Those opposed, the same. Might know they changed the location of one of them from right to left on the nays and yeas. Next on our agenda is the emergency closing policy. Jennifer?
Good morning, Jennifer, I'm very HR Director. So I sent you a memo regarding this policy, but basically, our most recent weather-related emergency closing brought a lot of discussion on our policy that we have on that and paying employees during such occasions. So I reviewed the policy and created some options in the draft on possibly revising that policy. The commissioners met yesterday and decided to continue it so that there could be more discussion and more review on that. So I don't, they don't have a recommendation for you today on that. I don't know if there are any questions, or if you wanted to discuss it in any way.
So, are the commissioners thinking about changing a few things, or just want to look it over some more?
Well, I think, okay, possibly both.
Okay.
We're looking at it right now, and discussing, you know, what Jennifer's come up with has been great, but we just want to take a little time and look at it before we make any decisions on it.
And I think I'd also note that Jennifer is reworking the personnel manual as a whole, but felt like this needed to be addressed before the manual was completed at the end of the year for approval for 2022, so.
And suggested that we table this until we have a recommendation from the commissioners? To make that motion? Second. Motion and second, any discussion? Those in favor signify by your right hand. Commissioners report.
Yeah, we had a good meeting yesterday. Highlights were Sheriff Gatton with his annual jail report. We discussed a little bit about the jail, the shape of the jail, which, that's one of the things that we're really continuing to work on as the jail project. We're still quite a ways out, but we've got a lot of hoops to jump through with the state right now. We have purchased the land, we're in the process of purchasing the land for the jail. We also had worked with the emergency closing policy, and we had a lot of discussion on that as far as, we really want to make sure whatever we do is right there, because every time we change anything on emergency closings, then it causes other issues, and we just want to be careful on, on what we do on that. And we will be approaching that the next meeting, which should be the 19th, I think. Continuing, continuing to work on the jail project, broadband has been a huge issue for us, we're getting some traction there, and I think the state and federal monies are going to be coming in for that, so we've got to make sure that whatever we do on that, we really are careful. We've learned some lessons on the broadband, and then working on policy changes with Jennifer, on the old policy that we have. That's about it right now.
Any questions for our collection? Next on our agenda is the previous minutes for the previous meeting. We have no corrections, we entertain a motion for approval.
Councilman Barrett, on the pension aid study, Sheriff Gatton presented, when it, about the third line down, it says the first option was 55 years of age and 20 years of service. Could that be 50 years of age?
Yeah.
Jenna says yes.
So, because she referred to it, the 52 and 50 down below, so.
Any, any more corrections? Move that we approve the minutes with that correction. Second. The motion is second, do we have any additional discussion? Those in favor approving the minutes, signify by raising your right hand. Do we have any questions or comments from our general public? Councilman Western. Councilman Hager, right?
I'd just like to tell Amy, I thought the report answered my questions, as you gave the report, and I appreciate coming with those facts and so forth. And Paula, you guys are always so busy, you know, and that, so a compliment to you and your staff.
Councilman Warner, I think, Councilman Comfort.
I actually have three items or one, because they all pulled together. First, the DLGF, and for those in the community that don't know all the acronyms, Department of Local Government Finance has requested that our budget be submitted earlier in the year, this year than they have, than we have in the past, because their deadlines are changing. And with council's agreement, Jan is going to send out that budget information this week or next, Friday. Secondly, DLGF has also directed, not insisted, but directed, that we do salary ordinance work before budget, which in some ways makes sense, because then you know what the budget for salaries. But that's not been our practice, so that will be a change if in fact the council agrees to that. And thirdly, in 2019, we passed 2019-11, an ordinance that stipulates the salary schedule and compensation policies for the county. In that ordinance, it states that any requests for additional positions or any refactoring requested by any department head or elected official, those requests be made by March 30th. That way, it can be factored into the budgeting process, and if job needs factored or refactored, that can be done as we work our way through the salary ordinance. We've already passed that date, and Jennifer and I think that probably most department heads were not aware of that. So with the council's permission, I would ask that Janet and Jennifer prepare a memo to department heads and elected officials telling them that by the end of April, any refactoring or any new positions be submitted so the Personnel Committee can begin those reviews and they'll fit in the budget process.
Tammy, I have a question. Why wouldn't they have known that?
I can't answer that, but at the same time, the council didn't operate in a knowing manner. We just kind of did the way things have always been done, and this ordinance got put back in the back of the brain.
Well, they definitely need to be made aware so we can continue with it in the future.
Any questions of Council in conference?
So is everyone okay with me sending everything out on Friday? Because then it would move, obviously.
What's the deadline going to be?
And then our all-day meeting will be June instead of July. So I will have the budget binders to by your June 8th meeting. And then I have June 16th, which again, I'll send this all to you guys, to June 16th. I have that as the all-day department head meetings with council. And then July 7th, budget changes and recommendations, which is a normal meeting. I will publish the budget on July 14th. And then August 3rd would be the public hearing for the budgets and solid waste budget. And then September 8th, that your normal meeting is when we would adopt, so.
Jenna, do you have anything additional?
I don't, the only thing that I did want to bring up, again, I know you guys have discussed tablets and stuff or laptops. I didn't know exactly for sure where you were with that, but I was, I was thinking it would be, it'd be kind of neat to like email you all, all of the form ones instead of having the big binders. You know, because that's, that's a lot of paper.
Time consuming.
Time consuming, and I could put them all in an Excel spreadsheet, and each tab would be a different department. And if they have several budgets, I would name each tab, you know, what their budget would be. That way you guys could make notes on your, I just didn't know where you guys were at with that. Because again, it would make packets easier. It would make, it would just make everything more efficient and cost savings. I mean, I know upfront, the laptops or tablets would be an expense, but it would save us in the long run. But again, it's just a, it's just a thought that I had, Tiffany and I have talked about it. And I just think that either giving you a flash drive or emailing it to you would be, would be great. But again, we can make that change next year.
Is it compatible with everyone's different types of computer setups?
Well, if I, I would think if I used, well, I would, I mean, I would think so if it's just Excel. As long as there's Excel is installed on the computer, it should work with any, any computer. I think. I'm not, that's, I'm not a techy person, but I would think so.
It will require reformatting of a lot of paperwork now. Do you have time to do it for this year?
Well, the thing, I can, I can actually save the form ones in different formats. So that's, that's where it definitely becomes a benefit, and I would just move it, just copy it, put it in the tab, move on to the next one.
Well, I would like to see some discussion on these laptops before they're purchased to see how everyone feels about it. I've never been asked. I heard about it at the meeting. So I think each one of us should be asked how we feel about it before anything is finalized. I mean, in all fairness to each one of us.
Actually, I was feeling like it was kind of a moot point because we have two council members that don't have a really significant internet access at this point in time.
Make it three, because I don't either.
Well, you would be one of the two, based on our discussions.
Councilman Wheeler.
Yeah, Councilman Wheeler does not.
Express.
Well, and at that point, that's where the USB would come in handy. You wouldn't need internet.
That's what I was going to suggest, that we get it digital, whether it's USB or email. I think that, why not try it? And if it's a struggle for us, what does ask you to print out all of those sheets? That's my opinion.
I can use a USB board. I just want to be, I just want to be, I want to make the correct decision on the laptops to make sure they're utilized to what we're purchasing them for. I don't want to waste that money because by the time you buy all of us one, it's not a small amount. It's pretty large. And if we're not going to utilize them, that's what we need to discuss. I mean, I want to know how we're going to utilize them.
And I haven't seen the quote on, was there a quote?
Right around $12,000.
Okay.
Yeah, because then you have to involve a tech, you know, it's not just giving us a computer. They have to be ready to go.
The $12,000 includes getting everything programmed so that that would come.
All right. Well, I'm just asking, we have more discussion on it before they're purchased.
Mr. Chairman, can I, you know, one of the things that we've been hesitant on is with the laptops is you have a tendency to print everything out anyway. And, you know.
It would be my ink and my paper.
Yeah.
From my standpoint on it, I recently went with Mercury Wireless, and they're not having real good history with them on it. So with us having a laptop, would I be utilizing my internet, whatever choice it is? And if it's down, then the laptop's down.
The only other option for that would be a hotspot, and hotspots are about $30 a month. If that is, and if you, you'd have, each one of you would have to have a hotspot to go with your computer. And that would be, you'd have your internet access at any time.
Is it possible for a councilman that wanted to purchase a computer for their use for the county to have all of the software and everything loaded onto it with the security?
It is, but as soon as, as soon as you would be off of the council, then it would have to be wiped out. And our, our process is to destroy the hard drive, so.
So if you purchased it yourself, you would lose your hard drive and have to replace it.
Yeah. Because that is a policy that we have. Even our printers have to be that the hard drives on the printers are destroyed.
Me too.
If we get rid of them.
Again, it was just, it was just a thought. I just wanted to bring that up.
And it wasn't a bad thought.
But if you guys decide.
Yeah, we just need to discuss that. Yeah.
Is everyone okay to receive it digitally though?
I can try it.
I can email it.
And why don't we let Jenna know individually if we prefer a drive to an email? Doesn't work, we'll go back to the old way.
But I suggest possibly that maybe one or two councilmen maybe get computers and see what they think about it and report it to the rest.
Yeah, that's a good idea.
Who would be interested in doing the test?
Well, since Thor isn't here, let's nominate.
Honestly, I think he would be interested.
Because I know he has issues opening his, opening PDS from me when he gets emails from me.
And I don't have any issues, but I'm storing all of my government business on drives to keep it off of my hard drive. And so if no one else really wants to, I'd be willing to.
You know, even with my outlook, it could be two days before I get an email that was dated two days prior. So, you know, it's like, I don't understand that either. So I could easily miss a meeting or something because I didn't get that posting. So that's just my Larry.
Any other discussion on the laptops?
I'm just afraid we're going to get the laptops and still have to do paperwork, so we're just double doing. I mean, that's what we're trying to eliminate. And my mind goes to, how many years is it going to take to make back that $12,000 with paper? I mean, you have to figure that out, and I can understand people wanting the laptops. It's just for me, it's not the most important thing we can be spending our money on.
One quick thing, a reminder that the AIC district meeting is May the 6th. And if you're planning on attending, you need to get an RSVP under Janet. Me also.
And Jim.
Eagle Glenn. Is it at Eagle Glenn this year?
Yes, at Eagle Glenn this year.
And it's an evening. It's an evening meeting.
Okay, thank you.
I found that you learn as much from council members from surrounding counties as you do from the state of Indiana.
Sure.
Anybody have any additional questions? I think we'll adjourn the meeting. One minute.
Sorry, I did forget. I did have one more thing. I did want to mention that I am looking into some new timekeeping software. Again, I will have everything, like hard numbers and everything at the next meeting for you guys. But I am looking into it. It's just a timekeeping system. It would replace the right stuff. It would speak or it would talk a lot better with our current software. They're actually a partner with our payroll software that we currently use. So we did see a demo, just the girls and myself and Tiffany and the payroll girls. And it was great. It's user-friendly, way more user-friendly. We don't have to use all the forms that we have now that people hate. So I just think, and it would be cost savings for us, for the county. I think, again, I don't have hard numbers, but it would probably be a $6,000 or $7,000 savings annually. And of course, there will be a setup fee, you know, initially, but we won't have that again. But I need to email him, get those, and I will definitely get those to you for your May meeting. But please, if you have any questions, concerns, I want to give you plenty of time to come and ask me if you, you didn't have anything before the May meeting. So just wanted to let you know.
Well, then we adjourn the meeting again.